To order, first item of the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Tony Hoya, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. unanimous walk-in, anyone here for the walk-in period? Anyone here for the walk-in period? Seeing none, moving on. Discussion vote, engineering contract, should we meet the applicant for the Water Resources Committee? Hi, how are you? Good, if you'd just come up, introduce yourself. Thanks for coming in.
I'm Heatherman.
Maura Quinn?
Yes.
Maura, how are you? Sit down.
Thanks.
Maura, just give us a brief, we have your resume here, we have your letter of interest.
What would you like to know?
Just tell us why you want to be on the committee.
Well, I've had a lot of experience in the environmental field and I stopped working after I had my second child and I've been interested in getting back into it and I thought that volunteering would be a good way to start.
Perfect. You brought John Clarkson with you, John?
Yes.
Were you, sir?
Good to see you all again, I'm currently the chairman of the Water Resources Committee and I reached out knowing that, having worked with Maura myself in the past and knowing that she lives in town, I thought she'd be a great candidate and we're fortunate that she's agreed to be considered by the selectmen for her membership on the committee.
Thank you. Questions for the board?
Hey, I support her 100 percent, she's a University of Vermont grad, so hey, I support cat amounts all over the place, there you go, you got my vote.
Thank you.
As an alum myself, so.
Okay.
What we'll do is make, we can actually make the vote later on tonight, but thank you so much for coming in and.
You both.
Thanks, Maura.
We'll take it from there. Thank you. Now, vote, discussion and a vote of the engineering contract town pier rehabilitation. Harbor Master. And Mr. Scott.
Gentlemen.
Maura, how are you?
All right. How are you?
Hey, Maura, hey, Paul.
Mark Patterson, Citro Harbor Master, I'm here with Paul Scott, who is some on board as an assistant for this very important project for the rehabilitation of our commercial fish pier. This pier is aimed at rehabilitating the primary supporting facility for our commercial fleet. The project is about $413,000 and is being funded 80 percent by the state through the Seaport Advisory Council with a grant that was awarded to the town back in April when the Seaport Advisory Council held their spring meeting at the Citro Maritime Center in Citro. The idea here is to bring the pier back to its, the condition that it was in about 25 years ago when it last saw any major repairs. The majority of the work is to improve the surface of the pier, replace some of the structural components, the seasonal docks, upgrade the utilities, replace the hoists, and give us a facility that we think will help us to ensure that the commercial fishing industry in Citro has the supporting structures that it needs for the next 25 years.
And is the 25 percent match, is that what you said?
80 percent state, 20 percent town through the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Questions for the board?
I just had one question, Maura. First of all, thank you very much for everything you've done, it's, I remember when the pier was done over 20 some odd years ago. My question was, what if this firm decides that its project is going to be more than $413,000, then what happens? We only spend that much money and that's it? Or do we have estimates that?
We'll have, we'll have two options if we're faced with that eventuality. We will either have to reevaluate the scope of the project, or we can look at the possibility and we have had this discussion at the state level of going back for additional funding.
Great, thank you.
Just two further comments. Mr. Scott's here because he's sort of serving as the clerk of the works overseeing the project, which is obviously a very good thing for the town and for the Harbor Masters office. And then also, a gentleman named Mike Driscoll, who's from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, has also been involved in selecting this, or reviewing the RFP responses, is that correct?
Yes.
Because DCR is the group that's paying the $325,000, so they have a vested interest. So in addition to our department review, it's also got an appropriate state review of the contractor, perhaps looking at that exact reason you might be asking about. So there's a little bit of at least process coverage for us if there's any situation along those lines.
And it was Mr. Driscoll with whom we had that conversation about if additional funds are needed. He indicated that there's potential to go back and get additional funding.
And Mr. Driscoll's been very familiar with the town and all the stuff that we've been doing in the harbor, and so he understands the context of everything here, he's not just some state guy, he's been down here many, many times and been involved in many other projects as well.
Thank you. Tony?
Maura, this is just the engineering component of it.
Yes.
So when is, when's the whole project time, timeline approximately?
We hope to, the engineering will bring on board immediately. His work goes through approximately July and hopefully sometime around Labor Day to begin construction. It's a maintenance project, there's no re driving of sheeting or anything like that, it's a maintenance project. And some of the, some of the schedules are going to be, or have to be coordinated, or will be coordinated with the fishermen and their activities, that's very important. When we built the pier in 1986, Frank Maracci and the fishermen were very cooperative and were able to work out schedules around the contract and so forth, and we've met with Frank just recently and talked to him about it, talked about the schedule a little bit. The first task of this engineer is to update existing condition survey that was done in 2010, and that, that survey did provide a cost estimate, summary cost estimate, that's how these figures were developed. At the conclusion of that condition survey, which will take about two weeks, both underwater and above ground and so forth, we'll meet with Frank again and start to coordinate all the activities.
So, but the maintenance, if you start in the fall, the maintenance will go through the winter and in the spring, or?
No, we anticipate a two to three month project.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's a maintenance project, as I said, it's mostly, the east side is the one that needs to work, the timber piles, the catalog needs to be replaced. The sheeting, steel sheeting itself, for 27 years old, is in pretty damn good shape.
Oh, good.
We're going to add some alloys to it to help slow down the corrosion and so forth.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the board's selectmen vote to award the contract for professional engineering services for the town pier rehabilitation to Child's Engineering Corp. of Bellingham, Massachusetts for a total price of $71,470.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous? Thank you. Maura, Bill, Paul.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Number five, the public hearing, discussion vote, alteration of license premises, Hadley Golf Club, 663 Hadley Road. Someone want to read the legal advertisement?
Order selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 2nd, in the selectmen's chambers, Citro Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Citro, Mass. at 7:10 to consider the application of Hadley Golf Club, Inc., 663 Hadley Road, Citro, Mass. for alteration of the license premise to include the entire 18-hole golf course, the practice area and tennis courts, including one, the entire clubhouse, which consists of two floors, the first floor being the men's and ladies locker room and room for storage, and the second floor being a lounge, dining room, and porch, and two, the approximate, the approximately 600 square feet, one-floor secondary structure located westerly of Hadley Road, the 10th tee box/ fairway and the practice area, and easterly of the 9th fairway and the 8th tee box. Secondary structure consists of a kitchen, serving area, handicap accessible men's and ladies restroom, and outdoor porch.
Good evening.
Bill, how are you?
I'm doing well. I've already delivered to Kim, I've given her the certified notices, all your butters have been notified in accordance with the assessors. So a quick introduction, I'm Bill Aronberger, with me here is Bob Tremblay, who's the club's manager, not only the manager of the club, but the liquor license, been with us for 13 years. Also here with me Frank Colepoise, who's chairman of the House Committee, which oversees all food and beverage services. I also have Jack Mitchell here, who's the president of the club, plus other members of the Board of Directors. In a nutshell, what this is about is we're looking to serve recently constructed halfway house out behind the 8th tee that we want to serve beer and wine from there, to be served at month, month course. Some of you may remember, it's on the south side of Gannett Road, some of you may remember it's been in historical recognition, they're naming it Hadley Snackery, against the old snackery that was over there, which many of us will remember as kids and younger adults getting ice cream and stuff during the summer. As indicated in the notice, all we're looking for is to, along as well as with the clubhouse, that's where alcohol beverages are served, to also serve things out of here, we're not looking to serve anything out of beverage carts or anything else along those lines, just strictly there to be consumed on the course. There are two well-needed handicap bathrooms, both men's and women's, which we have here. Conservation Commission has approved it, the building in essence is just about completed, it's going to be serviced by municipal water and sewer as soon as the sewer line is activated. Any of the people who would be serving, just as in the clubhouse, any beer or wine would be tip certified, well aware of what the issues are relating to use of alcoholic beverages. One of the things, in addition to the, the use of the license, that big long description basically is what the present description is, it basically says you can drink beer on the course, but it's only being served at this secondary, they call it secondary buildings with the ABCC says. One of the things, which is a permit that if the board grants our petition here, we also file with the ABCC a permit to transport and deliver alcoholic beverages, which is actually required because you cross over, like in other words, there's a golf cart, like golf carrier cart is what we're going to use in cases of soda and beer and Gatorade are coming out, they actually cross, no alcoholic beverages can cross a public road. And so actually, the carts we're using are actually registered with the state. In addition to that, under the ABCC rules, we will be posting on, on the course, on both sides of Gannett Road, saying no alcoholic beverages are permitted beyond this point, that's required under the state regulations. Similar signage will also be, you know, on, on the edge of the parking lot also, because no alcoholic beverages can be consumed in a parking lot either. Building looks great, if any of you've walked out, if you walk right enough Hadley Road, you can see it, it's about 200 yards away, it's a great opportunity for all the club, for the members and their guests, and I think it, you know, it's going to be a real attribute. And at that point, I'll end my presentation and answer any questions.
From the board. Anybody start off?
I don't see, I don't see a problem with that, I've had a conversation with Bill earlier, a couple of weeks ago, everything they seem to do is first class, never had any problems with renewals as long as I've been on the board. They don't want any bad press, so I'm sure they're going to do the best job. Only question I had, Bill, was would there, and I'm not, it's nothing to do with the members or the guests or anything like that, but if there would be alcohol stored there for a period of time where kids could get into it, and then, have you thought about that?
Yeah, it would be, and they actually have, it's constructed, Sean, there's actually on, on the entrance, on the entrance of the window and the entrance on the door, because you walk in the side and you go in basically into the serving spot, or to the right to the bathrooms, there's actually pull-down that are in place, pull-down steel gates that are locked, so there is no accessibility to the building after hours.
I believe it'll be alarmed as well.
Yeah.
And automatic lights if someone comes around, and the refrigeration that we ordered, I had locks, so they can lock up the actual refrigeration in the building as well.
Tony?
Yeah, just, Bill, is it in the same spot that the other one was, or?
No, 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 it's, it's further back, you see, there's a proxy, it's right behind the 8th tee, where there's a, there's a short practice area.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's between basically the 10th tee and the 8th tee, right in that area.
So where that little chipping area was, it's?
Exactly.
Right back there, okay.
Yeah, it's right there.
You mentioned the signs, where you're going to have a sign on either side of Gannett Road that says no alcohol.
Yes.
So is your, is the thought that whoever buys it over there has to drink it on that side?
Absolutely.
And then they'll be just trashcans or whatever?
Absolutely, yep.
And then vice versa on the other side?
Yep.
Rick?
No beer cart driving around?
No beer cart driver.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
John?
I have no problems with it, I've talked to Bill before about it. I think there's a larger issue that the board needs to at least identify with, and that is that I think, once we permit it with Hadley Golf Course, that all golf courses in town are obligated under law to be able to have that same opportunity. So by virtue of granting it to Hadley Golf Course, we are in essence opening up to the remaining golf courses to do the same exact thing. So I think the board should be aware of that, and we can either, you know, however you want to proceed, I'm happy with your application, it's just the larger issue is an issue that the board has to realize. So if Citro Country Club comes in, or if we're gonna, you know, we've been holding back on doing that with Whittle's Walk, but now by allowing it here, we're permitting it potentially elsewhere.
I think one of the differences, Jack Mitchell, the president of the club, one of the differences of the other two courses you mentioned, they return to the ninth hole, where we go all the way out and we don't come back. So in Citro Country Club, they play nine holes, they're back at the clubhouse, same with Whittle's Walk. So I don't think they really have the need to have another halfway house, I don't think they do.
Doesn't matter about the halfway, it's just mean, normally you're not permitted only at the clubhouse, and so the larger issue that I think the board needs to make sure that by virtue of passing on this, that we're entertaining all courses doing it, so.
I don't think there'd be, I think, I was thinking the same exact thing, you know, at Whittle's Walk, their clubhouse works as both, and Citro Country Club's only a nine-hole course, so I don't think they'll, but, good point.
Motion? After further, no further discussion of the board from the floor? Motion?
Move the board's selectmen vote to grant an alteration of the license premises for Hadley Golf Club, LLC, 663 Hadley Road, Citro, Mass. to include the entire 18-hole golf course, practice areas and tennis courts, including one, the entire clubhouse, which consists of two floors, first floor, men's and ladies locker rooms and storage room, and second floor, lounge, dining room, and porch, and two, an approximately 600-square-foot one-floor secondary structure located westerly of Hadley Road, the 10th tee box fairway and practice area, and easterly of the 9th fairway and 8th tee box. Secondary structure consists of a kitchen and serving area, handicap accessible men's and ladies restrooms, and outdoor porch.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck, luck, thank you.
Thanks.
Will that be open for this season, do you think?
Yes.
Soon as the sewer line's gone.
We have top people working on it, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, change of manager, TK O'Malley Sports Cafe, 9194 Front Street. Gentlemen, Walter, good to see you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Francis Omara, and I'm here as the secretary of McCloskey Corporation, which does business as TK O'Malley. With me is our new manager, the former president, and I'll let him address you further. I'm owner, A owner, obviously, been in town 20 years, so all we're doing is switching from one manager to myself. I plan on spending a lot more time at the location than the previous, a couple of previous years, and I've put my name on the manager's post to somebody else that I might hire.
Questions for the board?
So currently, who's currently on the?
Chris McMillan.
And is he still working there, is he no longer?
He's, he's going to be done working there pretty soon.
Okay, and, so you're just going to take over that, your name on that? Can there only be one name, is it, is this such that you only have one name on it?
Yeah.
The license is named to the corporation, and the corporation has a manager.
They name one manager, okay.
Motion? If there's no further motion?
Move the board's selectmen vote to grant a change of manager from McCloskey, Inc., doing business as TK O'Malley Sports Cafe, 192 to 194 Front Street, Citro, Mass. to Walter W. Collins.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, gentlemen.
And good seeing you again.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, Walter.
The live broadcast of this meeting has been stopped due to technical difficulties, but remainder of meeting is being recorded. Okay.
Just so Jimmy's gonna get me.
Seven Water Conservation Demand Management Project Grants Award, Al and Jim DeBarris.
Guess I'm without Al right now.
Without, without Al, minus L.
Yeah. We received, the town of Citro received a Sustainable Water Management Initiative Grant, it's called SWIMME grant, through the efforts of the Mass Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to maintain healthy rivers and streams and degrading water resources. So the DEP has encouraged the town to apply for the grant to continue the work on the fish passages on the first Tarrant Brook. The DP had some funds available for this type of project and were impressed by the results of the fish ladder and the stream flow work previously undertaken by the Water Division and North River South Watershed Association. You may remember that the work led to the Water Department receiving both, both the NSWRA and the Gulf Main Council Annual Award for Fishery Improvements. So basically, the scope of work that we're looking at with this grant is developing the final design and primitive and construction of the wear at the Olokom Bucket Pond Fish Ladder, study the feasibility and design of the fishway improvements at the 3A Reservoir Dam, and study the feasibility of increasing the storage capacity, Samantha, of the 3A Reservoir alone there. So the DP awarded us a $55,380 unmatchable grant, so we're excited to proceed with this. It's great.
Great, again, we're excited also, and thank you. You know, I think the, it's remarkable that people have gone through the water treatment plan and seen the work that you've done, and it seems to be a lot of people have traveled through there for one reason or another lately, and just so impressed with everything that goes on down there.
Thank you.
Thanks to your leadership and what you've done down there, and this is just another example where Citro is really stepping to the forefront as far as water resource and water conservation and water issues.
I'd like to also thank our partners here, Sammy Outlaw Woods from the North River Watershed Association, the great.
Who we're very familiar with and who work also.
People to work with, so we've learned a lot from each other, and it's a great team.
Just, just a comment, Maura, when you were here earlier, did you, I noticed one thing on your resume, it said you had a lot to do with grants, is this part?
That's why they pulled me in, no.
Well, that's what I.
This was done before.
All right, okay. Is there much of this available, Jimmy? This is great, is there more of this sort of stuff available?
Samantha could chime in with me on this, I believe.
This, this is a new grant program that was put forward through the DEP, and my understanding is, is it's going to be going forward again in the coming years, so we'll be able to avail ourselves of such grants again, if we do well with this.
And just by looking at the list of, you know, there's 10 or 12 other communities that got it, so there's, when you add up all those numbers, you know, there's a million dollars or so there of stuff that's, that's available, so it's great that we tapped into that, and obviously finishing up these projects and, you know, finding the capacity of the reservoir, that's something we've been talking about for years here, so that, that's all just working into our master plan of, of our water management, so great job.
Thank you.
The only thing I just want to, I want to add in is that, you know, in talking to a lot of other towns, there's a tension between the water departments and citizens and NGOs and stuff like that, not government organizations and things, in many towns, which is unfortunate, and it's, it's great being in Citro, where the Water Department and NSWRA works very well with our Water Resources Committee, and there's just, they're a great triangle of group there. They're all at each other's meetings, and it all works out really, really well, having the municipal and the other sides all working hand in hand, it's, it's unusual and it's really good to have it happen here.
Do we need a motion, or we, do we need to move to accept this grant, or do we need to do anything, or?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Maura, what have you done lately? You're not even on the board yet, and you're sitting here.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job, Jimmy.
Moving along, thank you.
Jim, thanks.
One day beer and wine license, two, to GAR Hall, 353 Country Way. Is anybody here from, representing the applicants?
No, Mr. Chairman, these, these are applications that are coming forward on a regular basis from both the Maritime Center and the GAR Hall.
Yep.
So as long as everything's been filled out properly, which it has, then they show proof of liability, insurance, and everything.
That's all we need, I agree, I agree. Motion, move the board's selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license to the Tuttle family for rehearsal dinner on Friday, September 6, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the GAR Hall, 353 Country Way. Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion, seeing none?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous?
Move the board's selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license to the Cadjus family for rehearsal dinner Friday, October 28, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the GAR Hall, 353 Country Way.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that's unanimous.
I was pleased to see they're not having their rehearsal dinners at the same time at the same place.
It would have been a little awkward.
And generator number nine, discussion vote, budget and articles, this is kind of a catch-up article of anything we haven't done, I believe, we still have not voted on the petition to contact the Congress, US Congress to pass and send to the state, send to the Senate, an amendment to the US Constitution. We had this discussion maybe two ago. Would anyone like to summarize it? It was basically a request by the petitioners that large corporations, et cetera, packs not be allowed to, to spend, care that it's election, elections. In a nutshell, I mean, that's basically what it is.
This is the famous Citizens United case, that it was a five to four Supreme Court decision that, as you just said, enabled, basically gave freedom of speech rights to corporations, thereby treating corporations essentially politically the same as individuals. Regardless of where we each may personally lie on this issue, and just for the record, I personally was opposed to the Supreme Court decision on this, so I support the goals of this petition, but I think it really has no place in town government, because there's really no influence this is going to have, in my position, in my personal view. I would worry that if we do this, we would potentially open ourselves up for getting petitions on multiple issues of national scale and on any other Supreme Court decision, which it seems to be increasingly controversial these days, and so while again, I personally agree with these petitioners, I would rather not we get involved in this, just due to efficient operation of our own town matters, as we certainly have our hands full on a number of other fronts.
Thank you. Further comments?
I think Rick summarized my position on it, I agree with Rick.
Thank you. It appears that we will take official vote, but it appears that the board will not support this.
So, but it's really, it's a non-binding.
Right, yeah.
I mean, they're just looking to get names of towns on a petition to go before the state to say we support.
That's right.
And it's really an individual's opinion, not a, a town's collective decision.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't care one way or the other, but I think it's, I'm leaning towards the idea that it's probably not a town issue. We can get ourselves into a whole lot of trouble going down the road, take the stands on national issues that we could have absolutely no effect on.
That would make our meetings longer.
They don't.
Talk about a lot more things. Then we get to the world stage.
So I would move the board's selectmen vote to not support Article 29, the petition to contact the US Congress to pass and send the states an amendment to the US Constitution.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, knock.
Mark Sandem, Chair of the Advisory Committee, just to update the board as to the discussions, we met with the petitioners last week at the advisory meeting, there was a good amount of discussion. At the end of the day, by the time we had brought the report to print in the previous week, we didn't have the meeting, we hadn't had the meeting, so the report indicates that there was not enough information at the time for the advisory board to render a vote, so that's what you folks will see in the advisory committee report. We're still debating it, we have not decided one way or another, and we're still wanting some discussion, so we will meet again on Thursday to have some further discussions. It's a mixed approach across the board, I shared exactly and brought up the same issues that Rick had brought up, that I thought there was enough issues that the town had to discuss and review, that while I was personally for it, bringing it up in the forum of the town meeting, I thought brought away from the really direct approach for town meeting. There's plenty of Supreme Court decisions, and that could. There's plenty of Supreme Court decisions, and that could, we could be discussing abortion, gay rights, what have you, so my concern was very much that. And there were probably other recourse that could go about pursuing this, so I just wanted to leave something to the board as a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Are there any other, Tricia, any other, Kim, any other housekeeping?
We got a vote on that, though. We got a first and a second.
All in favor of Mr. Murray's?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I just have one.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead, if you want to.
I have one. There's no sum on the last article you added to the special town meeting warrant for storm mitigation costs. Meg and I have been working on that number regularly because we're still getting bills in. As you note from the warrant article, it says to cover costs from Hurricane Sandy, the nor'easter, Storm Saturn, and Storm Nemo. The motion will itemize the cost for each of those storms into a special account we've been running. We, Nemo, since the board voted a state of emergency, has been running, being paid out of the stabilization fund. The other accounts have just been coming, being paid out of current operating, which will have shortfalls. And as of 6:30 tonight, that number so far is $788,000. That is not all in yet, it is for personal services and purchases services, which essentially is overtime costs and contracting costs. It does not include seawall repair, mitigation, whatever, because all those numbers are still under review by MEMA and FEMA. So that money's going to need to be transferred out of the stabilization fund at the special town meeting, and hopefully I'll have that motion by the 3:30 moderators' meeting tomorrow, but it could be higher.
So, just in that, there's currently, what, about $3 million in?
Yes.
$3 million in stabilization, so we'll have to take that and hope to get it refunded by the state or by the federal government. And then we have more money, free cash will be generated in 2013, which we'll figure out where to allocate that.
Right. And so we're estimating around $5 million in seawall damage. If MEMA, FEMA certifies all that, that's reimbursable at 75%, which means the town has a 25% cash match for that as well. So this amount from stabilization.
Of $5 million.
25% of $5 million. So.
But it's just, you know, one or two storms eats up 30% of our stabilization fund, so it's.
Well, that's right.
It's a big number.
And three years ago, we had 1.1 in stabilization, but as part of the financial management, we've actually put money in there, and now we need it, unfortunately.
But this is what it's for.
Goodness, we have it.
That's exactly what it's for.
Goodness, we have it.
Yep. And at least we have it, otherwise we'd be cut into bone and law operating.
I think the temptation, as we know, we've been through this, the temptation as we go along, so many things come up every year, that the temptation to dip into those funds to cover a short-term need is always present, and in the past, we've been able to avoid that temptation, and as a result, we have this money in here. That speaks well to the financial management, I think. All right?
I just have one of the, on the local meals tax, Article 14, that we're talking about, and I don't know, I think we have to make a motion on the floor, because we didn't get it in, we had discussions about making sure that that didn't go to the operating budget, but I don't think we ever got that in the warrant, and I don't think we ever made that formal in the actual article itself. So when that comes up at the town meeting, do we still want to make that motion that says that it's the board's intention not to use that for operating basis, but to use for one-time capital expenditures or other usage?
Can we do that now? Why would we have to do it on the floor?
Or it's not printed.
Or at our pre-meeting?
No, it's excellent. I mean, the warrant article sets out the general purpose intent. If you want to be very specific as to what you intend to use that revenue for, it should be reflected in the motion.
And the person who speaks on that will say that at the microphone.
On the selectmen's article for meals tax, yes. So you should probably discuss it now, so I can change the motion. Because right now, all the motion says is adopt chapter 260.
So we have to have that motion. Could we also do it, I mean, we can verbally discuss what our intent is, and then could we actually get the wording nailed down at our pre-meeting before?
No.
No?
The motions need to be to the moderator tomorrow, and have already been approved by town council.
Well, do we do it now?
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Well, I think what we discussed at one meeting, that we were just, it's going to be vague, but it's going to be vaguely specific in terms of, it's not going to go towards, these funds will not be used for the operating budget. We're not going to say specifically that it'll be used for seawalls, or for capital plans, or for economic development, but we do want to make sure that people understand that we want to use these funds for.
Non-recurring items in the schools and towns budget that would reduce the impacts to taxpayers?
Say that again?
Non-recurring items in the schools and towns budget that would reduce future impacts to taxpayers. The key thing is non-recurring items, as opposed to the.
Non-recurring, could you?
Sort of, I think we have to be careful not to make it too vague. I think if it's too vague, I don't think it'll be accepted by town meeting if it's too vague. I think we have to be as specific as we can as to where this money's going to go. I really do, I do.
Non-recurring, you could technically have it as part of the operating budget if it's a non-recurring.
Well, the operating budget is, I don't care the wording, I think we're all on the same page as the intent, I just wanted to make sure we get the wording right, but non-recurring, which we used in this document that just submitted to the Mariner, that's where I got that wording from. Non-recurring means things that come up this year, but might not come up next year. Like, I guess seawalls is a classic example, or foreshore protection this year, or maybe next year, we might have a, I don't know, some stream washes out a road, so we really need to do a whole bunch of work on some road, that sort of thing. So I think that's what we're talking about, right?
I think we are, but I think.
Or the town master plan, that's, you know, the town master plan's not going to be something that we do every year.
I mean, if you follow through on what you're saying, Rick, and it's allocated for different projects in different years.
Yeah.
It might be a stream this year, or maybe, then you have the possibility of people coming to the board every year, taking money from that $200,000. Do you follow what I mean?
I'm with you, I got it. Fine.
Yep.
And I wonder if that causes more of a headache than.
That's a good point.
Saying he's $100,000. My thought was, again, and this is my thought, was to take it and allocate it initially, my thought was allocate 100% for the master plan. I think that the, and I've said this time and time again, that the hit on the taxpayer is going to be huge, and we have to do everything we possibly can to bring that number down. Since then, and listening to discussions from the board, I realize the importance, you know, also of other items, including seawalls and including economic development. So I think that a portion, and I won't get into the percentage now, but a portion should be, of that should be designated maybe for economic development, either a solid number or a percentage, and the same maybe for seawalls, to help out that situation. So my allocation, I guess, of that money would be threefold. One would be, the majority of it would be to pay for the master plan, with other percentages going to seawalls and economic development. And end it there, because if you don't end it there, you might have people coming to you every year, well, give me $25,000 out of that, it could be $50,000. That's all I'm thinking of, and that's just my opinion.
I like the idea. One thing also to remember about the master plan is if, if for some reason it doesn't pass, then that money is still there to be used for something else, so we would have to revisit the issue at that point.
Could do that.
There's a, the money's not going away in that regard, it's still there.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Rick, in the situation that if it, we can't tell what's going to be the future. If the master plan, strategic plan goes into play, then this is a source of revenue that can help fund it. The other two areas, seawalls, I've always been mentioning that, the board has, and I think it's important because the cost for it, it's a huge cost, $52 million. But the other one, what I think is important, that Joe has noted, is the post-retirement employee benefits. I mean, these are another unfunded liability of $53 million, and to me, I'm like, trying to get my hands around it, this, at least, those three, to me, are the biggest significant amounts of money that we're going to be dealing with. And to me, I think those would be the three areas, that I'm looking at. But I can see we're all kind of agreeing to some, and some highlighting other ones, and I, would we be able to say that, I think Rick, you mentioned it earlier, that our motion that we make, that we state that it will not be used, the funds will not be used or proposed to be used as part of any annual operating budget for the town or the school, and would that suffice to give us wiggle room to be able to address this afterwards, or do you want it specific?
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if you, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, if you don't have it specific, will town meeting agree with you? If you have it too open-ended, town meeting may think that it's just going to go somewhere, you know?
Right.
And I could be wrong on that, I just think, for town meeting purposes, I think you have to be specific. Maybe you don't. Sean?
This has generated a lot more discussion in the last month than I ever thought it would, where it sounds like we're, you know, almost like spending money before we have it. I know we're going to get a certain amount of revenue, but the more we talk about it, the less comfortable we are about earmarking it for anything. Why not just, I agree with it, and Walter didn't, you know, he was here for something else, but I mean, you know, we haven't heard any opposition from restaurants, all right? So it's going to go through. Rather than have it fail, I'd rather see us save it. If it's $200,000 a year, put it in an account and just leave it alone for a future board to decide. Rather than have it fail. Our biggest concern a few years ago, and I couldn't find the document, what the other towns do with it, I know I saw it, our biggest thought a few years ago was, what are our neighbors doing? Well, now they're all charging it, and I think we got documentation to see what they do with it, and I just can't find it. But it seems like we're, you know, everyone has ideas of a way to spend this money. We don't have it yet. And, you know, Joe, you of all people in the banking business, Tony, you know, save it.
I think.
You know what you're saying, and I agree, I agree, you know, if it leaves it too open-ended, there's a fear that it will fail, and, you know, EDC wants a portion for their group, they want it all, you know, but rather than lose.
I don't think we're at risk of losing it, because we're going to be vague in allocating.
You think it'll pass one way or another?
I think it'll pass. I think, I think we're all on the same page in terms of conceptually where we want the money to go. I don't know if you want to list the 10 things that say, this is what we think it should go to, or if we can just, like John mentioned, you know, not going to annual operating budget, and then the board has to allocate it every year. That's, I mean, that's what we're here to do, to make those budget decisions. We actually do that every year, and if we see a good EDC, I mean, economic development project come through, and it costs $62,000, and we want to support it, we support it. If we, if we want to, at some point in time, say, look, we want to take $120,000 off the debt, then do that. I would, I guess my opinion would be to go in there being vague in the specific allocations, but definitely saying it won't go towards the operating budget. But again, I think we're all on the same page in terms of what we want the use of the funds to be, so however you want to word it.
I agree, and I would, and I would like to see us be more specific, only because of the fear that down the road, in future years, when you have $200,000 sitting up there, or sitting right here, you will be inundated by people looking for a piece of that pie, and some ideas that you can't even think of now, and some of them may be good and some of them may be not so good. I prefer, and I've said this all along, would like to see something tangible and have it allocated towards offsetting the cost of the master plan, which I think is going to be larger than anyone ever realized.
So do you want to be specific in terms of 50% for this, 25% for this, 25% for that? I mean, if you don't get that specific, then I think it's.
Yes, I agree. I think you have to be, whether you want to come down to 50%, 25%, 25%, or could you just say it would be used for seawalls, economic development projects, and paying off the debt on the master plan if that should pass? That would be my thought. Now, again, as you said, we're all on the same page, I think, trying to figure out some way to earmark it, but we just.
Well, why don't you say something you might think, with the revenues no less than X percent shall be allocated to capital? And that deals with all of those, and still leaves you delta to deal with economic development or something like that.
No less than 50%?
Say, you know, move that we adopt with no less X percentage of the revenue to be adopted each year toward, of this revenue toward capital.
That's fine, but from my point of view, okay? It could never go to, it may possibly never go towards the master plan. It may go towards other capital projects, you know what I mean? So from my point of view, that's, I understand where you're going with it.
I think if you get specific and say the master plan, that may turn off more people than it, you know, I think it's just putting the cart before the horse a little bit.
Well, then you'd have to go to another town meeting, because if the master plan doesn't pass, you've already earmarked the revenue.
And the other thing about that is, looking at the timeline of this, we're going to know about the master plan, and we're going to need to put together a funding model for the master plan within the next six months, regardless. And four members of this board will be here for that discussion, so it's very clear in our institutional memory. So we'll know about a funding model, and we could decide to put a certain amount of that into the master plan or not, and if the master plan doesn't work, we'll know that in eight months, right? So I think the master plan aspect of this will solve itself just by virtue of the timeline. If the master plan was three years out, or even two years out from now, then we have the issue of, well, what do we do in the interim? But in terms of the fiscal appropriations or the fiscal use of this vis-à-vis the master plan, it's essentially all on the same calendar.
Okay. I, I'm happy to specify, if we had to. I know that we had been given a policy from the town of Foxborough that kind of further identified and described what they were doing. I'm not sure whether they initially did a motion and then clarified it with a policy afterwards. Tricia, is that what the town of Foxborough did, you know, or not?
I don't recall off the top of my head, because I don't have the stuff here. I think they identified the earmarking when they accepted it.
The one area that I completely, because as I said to you before, with the seawalls, which I'm pushing, because I think that because of the cost, I completely forgot about the post-employment benefits, employee benefits, which, you know, is an unfunded liability, and I guess my thought is, I was going to ask Tricia, you know, like, going forward, how do we approach trying to begin to fund that going, you know, for the future? We don't have the money. This was a great avenue for it, which is why I think it should be included. By saying 50% towards capital, that doesn't fall any capital, it falls into another category. What would that fall into, just for my?
Human resource.
Operating? Yeah, it's an employee, it's treated as an employee benefit now.
So.
We used to have a separate article for it.
But I'm just saying that I think that because it's so large, $53 million, we got to think about that going forward. So I think you got to put that in the same conversation with these other large expenditures. So I think you got to put that in the same conversation with these other large expenditures. And, you know, go from there. So that's the only reason why I keep coming back to that one, too. I think you got to include it, because we're ever going to come up with it, you know?
It's 200K a year, right?
I mean, the only thing I'd bring up here is, we are kind of, we are kind of in competition, I guess, for these funds with another article on the warrant. So the more complicated that we make ours...
You're right.
The more it may turn off people to just say...
Nick Sirens over there, yeah.
So, and again, I hate it to be a we-they, because, you know, economic development is an important role also. I know I'm repeating myself, but I think if we, if we keep it, if we keep it non-operating, then we'll just have to deal with it.
Could we limit it to non-operating, of course? And then capital projects and economic development? Capital projects then covering, possibly Seawall's...
Yeah, but it wouldn't incorporate other...
It wouldn't incorporate OPEB, no, it wouldn't. And I guess what I'm saying, OPEB, as correct as you are, with a $53 million, $53 million liability, would $50,000 a year going into OPEB?
Too much, no, just a drop in the bucket.
I'm fine with capital projects and economic development.
That's fine with me. I only raise it now because I'm thinking with OPEB, how do we approach it?
I disagree with you. It's like affordable housing, 10%, just one of those numbers you're probably never going to reach.
Right, no, you're right, you're right.
Alright, maybe we've reached, oh, Ian, excuse me.
I understand what you're saying, and allocating this money. What if you, instead of divvying out 50% for this, 25%, so on, what if you just put it in our savings account, stabilization? And then that, it keeps it simple, it's there, it accrues, it's a bank account. And when somebody comes forward, whether it's for Seawalls, whether it's for economic development, presentation is made, and comes out of stabilization, that's our bank account, keep it simple.
I think our rationale was, when we first thought about this, or first started thinking seriously about this, we wanted to show people something tangible right now.
I think a savings account is more than tangible.
Well, maybe you do, and I'm not, you know, God knows, Ian, I'm not saying that I'm right all the time, and certainly you're not either.
The only other thought, you were probably going to say one, go ahead.
I was going to say, the only problem with that, Mr. Burbine, is that when you put it into stabilization, then town meeting's going to make the determination, so, and I don't want to necessarily be hamstrung by town meeting, because sometimes it could be 400 people, it could be 200 people, or 100 people. And I think, I think my position is, I'd rather have more flexibility so that we can determine the use of that, as opposed to trying to wait for six months, or a whole year, for town meeting to decide to approve what we're deciding, what we would like to use it for, for the town.
The only other thing I'd add is, taking things from the stabilization fund are typically an emergency situation. You know, it's typically, it's not...
And the Seawalls are emergency?
Let me finish. Well, Seawalls are, but not, not a feasibility study for, you know, overlay districts possibly. So you don't want to get in the, in the habit of going to the stabilization fund on a regular basis, in my opinion, unless it's a one-time or emergency type of situation, like we're doing with, with the Seawall stuff. So I don't think that's a good, good space for it, but...
Okay.
I like that that idea is simple, but I worry that it would open us up to a charge of the money would just disappear and not be as easily traced.
If what?
And Ms. Burbine's suggestion.
Oh, okay, we're back.
I like the simplicity of it, but I worry about, it would open us up to the... There it is.
The question now comes, I guess, do we want to, I think we've simplified it a bit, you know what I mean?
So should we just add, can we try and just add some language to the end of, you handed me the motion. As it currently stands, it says, move the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing a meals tax.
Authorizing a meals tax.
Do you have language?
How about further that the board of selectmen endeavor to allocate the funds to include, but not be limited to, capital, economic development, OPEB costs, that's the post-employment, retirement, employment benefits, as it, as it deems the best use for said, of said funds, I'll say that again. Further that the board of selectmen endeavor to allocate the funds to include, but not be limited to, capital, economic development, OPEB costs, as it deems the best use of said funds.
Unless we want to remove the OPEB.
Unless you want to take the OPEB out.
But it doesn't mean in any one year that, I like that wording, because it doesn't mean that each year we have to divide it between those four. One year we might say it's all going to capital. One year we might say, or future boards might say, you know, there's a good economic development project that could really use a good 200 grand kicking the pants to get going. Maybe other years we do some, you know, divvying it up. Or maybe some year there's some, I don't know, I'm just making this up, some federal match that would mean we could really put 200,000 into the retirement, and maybe the feds are going to match it, and so we get leverage. It gives some flexibility, and it also provides some specificity.
I'm fine with that, unless you want to take out the, on the pension, yeah.
I would say...
Financial policies now require 2% of our health insurance assessment to go into OPEB off the top of the budget. So if our health insurance assessment goes up $500,000 next year, 2% of that's going to be another 100,000, I mean, significant. But that's what our financial policies say now.
Take out OPEB.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are funding it.
So I think we've got a sense to take out OPEB. I leave it, leave it with capital.
Fair enough. So limited to capital, economic development costs.
Okay. Again, I'll just, yes, I'll vote for that. I just want to emphasize, I would have loved to have seen it all go to the cost of the grand plan. I think that's going to be giant. I just would like to see it all go to that, but...
But it may, right? This does not require us to put it all into capital, nor does it require us to put it all into economic development.
But none of it could also go to the grand plan.
We need a motion?
Yep.
Yes.
A motion, so I move that we change the motion for Article 14, as John just stated.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, that's you, the others.
Can I have it?
Go ahead and save that.
Back to you, Tricia.
I'll give back.
Any other discussion on...
Discussion, new committee charged investigating options for funding the public facilities master plan. This is, what do you know, a nice lead-in, this is something I've talked about for a while now. We know the cost of the grand plan is going to be large. I think we have an obligation to try to attempt to come up with ideas to help fund that grand plan. And I'd be willing to, to serve on a committee if the board feels that a committee like that would be helpful.
Yes, yes.
You want to chair it, Joe?
I don't think I'd chair it, they said I'd sit on it, I feel you'd be a good chair.
Pardon, backpedal?
I would actually, I would like you to be the chair, if you're willing to take that opportunity.
Well, let's see who signs up for it.
Just to signal the intent of the board, I think you've heard a couple things.
I think, I think the board's intention, I read it, is to, fine, go ahead with it.
Yes.
Mariner, break that up and...
Yes.
Okay? I'm sorry, did I wake you?
Alright, thank you.
Actually, you know, this is, I mean, we just had a long conversation about aspects of this, and this is really important, because for this public facilities master plan to work, we're going to need to present to the town a funding model. And we're going to need to look over, look underneath every stone, and look through every single possible way. We've talked about selling the senior center location, we've talked about this, we've talked about that, we've just talked about the potential meals tax, so there's other things several of us have been talking about. And in all honesty, I, this is a very important thing, because even if everybody's on board with the need, if we can't figure out a presentable and saleable funding option, it won't happen. So this is really important, and I think...
Okay, so we'll go forward with that. Eleven announcement, committee commission, board council authority, openings, economic development committee, and housing authority. We have openings on all these boards. We also have Kim, the full appointment process in June, right?
Yes, correct.
So how does the board want to handle it? When I say that, I mean, do you, do we want to make the appointments now for two months? Or do we want to wait till June?
Wait till you, what's the regulatory compliance?
The housing authority is a little bit different.
Yeah, it's different, I understand, yeah.
It's an unexpired term, so if you could announce that there's an opening for this unexpired term on the housing authority, that is an elected position, so that really does need to be filled for a year and a month or something like that.
The...
People would like to submit their applications or...
To you for the...
To the board of selectmen.
Okay.
And then it'll be a joint vote of the board of selectmen and the housing committee.
Ruth, would you be kind enough to put that?
Yeah, I can just get those two, invite those two things at the meeting.
Okay, housing authority. Economic development...
You could, you easily could wait until the June appointment process.
I think if people are really interested, and they want to get a letter in, there's no harm in putting a letter in now. Is there Kim?
No, there's no, that would be great.
They can put it in now, but it's quite possible the board may not make appointments till May or June appointment meeting. How's that? Okay?
Now, do we get a letter here where someone is expressing interest in filling that?
Yes. But we have to advertise it.
We have to advertise it, oh, I see.
Okay, anything else on the elect committees, et cetera, et cetera? No? Water resource committee and election workers.
Joe, did you want to talk about that other memo on the back there?
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, okay, yep.
Climate change thing?
Yep. This is...
No, it's under that same agenda item. We had talked how...
Yep, I'm just trying to find it here, Rick, I'm sorry.
Yep, it's after those two, in your binder.
Okay. This is the committee that was suggested.
Oh, the, yeah.
Right after the housing authority.
There you go.
Here with this one here, suggested by Selectman Murray, from a committee to look into the long-range aspects of climate change, its short, medium, long-term effects on, on the coast, and we being a coastal town, how important it is to us. We've seen in the past couple of years in particular, you know, a growing concern for the future of our coastline. And Mr. Murray, why don't you take it from there?
Sure, thank you.
What your plans would be.
Well, we're going to discuss this at a future agenda, future meeting, I think late April in full. But right now, there's a real need to at least have a, a working group, because the town is dealing with a lot of information coming out of some coastal zone management, and several other agencies, and several other departments. And so this has sort of naturally fallen into my bailiwick for a variety of reasons, and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, and also ask their permission for, to sort of be the point man for discussions with Tricia, and I've talked about this with Tricia and several department heads, about coordinating a number of different aspects of what's going on in terms of cleaning up from this past winter. And then this will segue naturally into what we will discuss in the future, a, a working group to really take a long-term look at the effect of climate change in our community. In addition to foreshore protection, but all sorts of issues about what's the future of our wastewater treatment plant, which is at a very low elevation. We need to start having these discussions. And the very first thing I'd like to do would be to have discussions with department heads and other town officials, and kind of come up with a laundry list of potential things we may or may not be interested in doing. And then we could present this up to the board for, you know, longer discussions. But there's so many different discussions going on, we need to sort of group these together to get our hands around it. But I want to emphasize that in addition to the coast, this climate change and these storms are affecting the entire town. Power lines go down all across town. It rains all across town, we have flooding all across town. Wastewater treatment affects many, many different aspects of town. And I think this is something that we really need to look at, because there are significant costs longer than things that we'll be able to deal with on the short term.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, and hopefully ask their support in general.
Would you be looking for people to help you with this committee now, or do you want to wait till further meetings?
Not at this point, because, I mean, just in the last 48 hours, we've been with Pat Galvin and Laura Harbottle. We've been contacted by coastal zone management to have a meeting to discuss the flooding that's gone on. Separately, we've had people talking to Al Bangard about different aspects of power line status and things.
Okay.
They're all related, and we sort of need to bring them under an umbrella.
Alrighty, move one. Appointments, water resource committee and election worker. We met the applicant earlier. A motion.
Vote to the board of selectmen appoint Mara Quinn to the water resource committee.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that's you, Janice. Congratulations, and thank you, Mara.
Vote to the board of selectmen vote to appoint Florence Eli as an election worker.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving along. Town administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items to share with the board. The first is that the public facilities steering committee continues to meet regularly. And last Tuesday, they had a tour of the fire station, the police station, and town hall. And that was videotaped by John Roser, our cable manager, and will probably most likely be up on our website for people to view. It's a little lengthy, so we want to edit it. But we've focused a lot of information in the previous months about Gates School, and the library, and the senior center. And so this is the first opportunity, I think, to have folks get an understanding of the challenges we face, and why we're contemplating a new public safety building and leaving this building to Gates. We plan to meet with the school superintendent to discuss Gates, the committee does, and also have a tour of that facility, as well as the library. And we'll videotape those as well. So one of the questions, obviously, that's come up with that group is what you just talked about, is how are we going to pay for all this? And while we've done lots of background preliminary work already, I think it's a great idea that Joe suggested to have a group of talented people focus in on just developing the informational material and options for revenue for the plan as we get more and more accurate cost data. The second thing I want to talk about is that four o'clock today, I attended a meeting in Marshfield with Senator Elizabeth Warren and 60 area fishermen to talk about the limits on fishing in Cape Cod Bay. Situate in Marshfield combined represent the fourth largest fishing industry in Massachusetts. And federal regulations right now are severely impacting our fishermen. And they took an hour to share with Senator Warren the challenges they face, and asked for her help. It was an extremely informative meeting, very compelling, with many of the personal stories our fishermen told them. And hopefully, she'll be able to carry that message back to Washington. Representative Cantwell helped facilitate that meeting, and I attended at the invitation of Tom Clark. So just wanted to share that with the board. You know, we have beautiful beaches that people go to, and beautiful views that residents have, but the fishermen actually work the sea, and they're really facing some challenges now. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving along, I have one piece of correspondence, I'm not going to read the entire. It's the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. And it's addressed to the board of selectmen. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission is very pleased to inform you that Todd Brightstein, associated with the Situate Conservation Commission, Commission, successfully completed MACC's Fundamental for Conservation Commissioner's Training Course and received a certificate of achievement. And then it goes on to explain what, what the certificate is, and we just want to thank Todd for taking the, the time and the effort to go that extra step to get this certification. MACC offers training programs year-round at locations across the state, so we're just, again, thanking them and thanking him for their interest. Next, anyone else have anything on the correspondence? I don't.
Other business?
Other business, go ahead.
A couple of quick things. Wanted to thank Recreation for the Easter egg hunt they had on Saturday. Huge turnout, thousands of eggs, and hundreds of little kids running around picking them up, so they, it really takes a ton of work to get that, as you know, I think Kim did it for years, to get all those things full and out there on the, on the course, and it was a great turnout and a great day.
Did it start at 10?
Started at 10.
I noticed Sean down there about 8:30 with the bag.
Yeah, yeah.
But he may be enjoying something else, though.
Cleaned up. And then on, on a coinciding note is Widow's Walk Golf Course is open. So it opened, I think, right after the Easter egg hunt, so go out and enjoy that in the good weather. Also, a quick note, I wanted to thank DPW Department for their work on the fields. It's been a rough winter, and baseball season is underway now, and the fields have needed a lot of work to get into proper playing condition, and they've been working on those. The high school had their first game the other day, they'll be out here tomorrow, and all little leagues getting away after April vacations, so thank you for the work to get those fields in condition. One other note, all your stickers are expired, so go get your transfer station or your beach stickers as they expire over the weekend, and I'm sure there's some sort of leniency for the next couple of days, but you got to get that taken care of. And lastly, we had a financial forecasting meeting prior to this meeting and reviewed the 2014 forecast, which, there were no changes, good discussion in terms of free cash and all that sort of stuff, but all that is in line, and we'll be producing a five-year rolling forecast for the town meeting next Tuesday.
A week from tonight. Other business, anybody?
Yeah, we had Mara Quinn and John Clarkson here from the Water Resources Committee in front of us, and so I wanted to bring to everybody's attention that for more than 35 years, the American Water Works Association and its members have been celebrating Drinking Water Week. So this year, our Water Resources Committee is joining with the Water Department in bringing Water Week to Situate. And so, for example, on Thursday, May 9th, there will be a public discussion...
Yeah, that's Coca-Cola.
There's water in there.
Thursday, May 9th, there's going to be a public discussion at the Pier 44 building, development of a town water conservation plan on Jericho Road.
I'm only saying because Tricia's been trying to say it's the Situate Harbor Marine Cent- Community Center, rather.
Harbor Community Center.
It's the Pier 44 is what it's known as.
Yeah, it's going to be...
Sorry, Tricia.
So Thursday, May 9th, at the Harbor Community Center, AKA formerly Pier 44, development of a town water conservation plan, public meeting, everybody's welcome to attend, 7:30 to 9:00. And then also on Saturday, May 11th, there's going to be Family Fun Day at the water treatment plant, 9:00 to noon. Come down and get tours and see what goes on in terms of water treatment. And it's a heck of a facility, and it's incredibly complex, and if you've ever wondered where that water comes from, that when you turn the faucet on, go check it out, because our water people do a great job. So that's it from me.
Thank you. I think that's it, other business? I think, I think, I think, yep. Next item is an executive session.
Minutes?
We'll do this first, okay?
Move the minutes of May 22nd, 2012.
Second.
Most of them made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstention.
And move the minutes of March 5th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now moving on to executive session, generator number 15. This is an executive session to be called to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Department of Public Works contract. Because of the open meeting will have a, because of the open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, because an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, the Department of Public Works contract? The board will return to regular session this evening.
Second.
Most of them made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous?
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Aye.
Yes.